You don't have to sit down, because we're going to do.
I know.
Good afternoon, everyone. Let's stand for Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the United States of America, to the Republic, where its citizens, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have a moment of silence before we start the meeting. Thank you. We'll call the meeting to order. Got approval of the minutes for March 5, 2018, meeting? Any corrections, additions?
I'll motion to approve the minutes.
Again. Motion to second. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. March 28, 18, financial report.
I have a question. It's regarding some, I guess, the cleaning service. And correct me if I'm wrong, but so right now, in the community center, we're using Centos. And from what I've read, we're changing back over to Raymond Johns. But just looking at the Walmart receipts, there are some items for toilet cleaning items and stuff like that. But it looks like there's, from Centos, there's some stuff for the toilets and stuff there. So I guess what I'm asking is, is the cleaning service cleaning our restrooms, or are we cleaning our restrooms?
We clean our restrooms.
Okay. That was, it was a question that we just discussed at the park board, and I told them I'd just kind of ask them here tonight, so.
We clean the entire building, Trey. We even go over and mop, we strip the floor in the community center, all the dining area in the community center, and we do all the maintenance on the building. We even put the light bulbs up in the gym, and any maintenance that's done on the building, the city takes care of.
Okay. And that's, was kind of their response. They thought that, you know, it was probably Amber that was doing that, but I just wanted to ask. So, okay, thank you.
Any other questions on financials?
Make a motion to accept.
Thank you. Thank you, Ted. Thank you, Debbie. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Mayor, excuse me. Mayor's open remarks. Just welcome everybody here tonight, and welcome ones back. It had a wonderful spring break while we were here watching it snow, so welcome back. Thank you. Number five on the agenda has been postponed. We might try that again in May if we get any information.
Do you know why?
Yeah, they're trying to work out a deal, I reckon, for it. I know, yeah. Number six is written determination for disposal of real property, 313 East Main Street. Steve?
Thank you. Written determination for disposal of real property. Whereas Kentucky revised statute, KRS 82.083, states in pertinent part, one, a city may sell or otherwise dispose of any of its real or personal property; two, before selling or otherwise disposing of any real or personal property, the city shall make a written determination setting forth and fully describing, A, the real or personal property; B, its intended use at the time of acquisition; C, the reasons why it is in the public interest to dispose of it; and D, the method of disposition to be used. Therefore, the following written determination is hereby set forth and made: A, the city owns certain real property, specifically real estate three feet of right-of-way located at 313 East Main Street, running from the northeast corner of Main Street and Oak Street in LaGrange, Kentucky, and continuing from the front of said property at Main Street and running parallel with Oak Street to the rear of the property. This three-foot section of right-of-way is only a part of the existing right-of-way. It continues from the front to the rear of the lot and is just east of the existing property line of 313 East Main Street. Property description for the adjoining lot is found in deed book 1163 at page 471 and is, should be recorded in the office of the Oldham County Clerk in LaGrange, Kentucky. B, the city intended to use this property for right-of-way at the time of acquisition, and the property was, in fact, used for that purpose. C, it is in the public interest to dispose of this property. Transferring this property will afford the city an economic development opportunity as the owner is improving the property, and there will be an increased basis in the tax base as a result of these improvements. The improvements are not practical or feasible without this transfer. D, the city will transfer this property by way of a deed to the owner of record for $1. This written determination is hereby adopted as true by the mayor and city council of the city of LaGrange, Kentucky.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Any discussion, Joe? Anybody want questions, or?
We need to answer them. Need roll call unless you're just.
I would. I'd roll call it. Roll call.
There's no questions. We'll do a roll call on the written determination for real property. Stephanie?
Are we able to vote on this?
Historically, we have done both. Realistically, we don't have. It's political courtesy.
Okay.
Do we need to say that out loud? Or do we just do it?
No. Doesn't matter. I mean, the answer to the question, she can, it's like a straw poll. It's not by any means. Goodwill. Did you want me to say something?
Okay. Okay. I'm sorry about that. I've been asked a question, so I'm going to pose it to the group. I was asked if there was any reason for there to have to be a vote on this, or is it required? And it is not. However, this is a courtesy. I'll, for the moment, just call it political courtesy. This is an executive decision. However, by putting it to a straw poll, we can find out if council supports this or does not support this. And even though the mayor did not ask, there might be somebody here who's either for or against it in the group that might want to come forward before a vote is taken, too. But it's entirely up to the chair to decide how to proceed on this.
I think we maybe need to explain to the public a little more of what this property is, because I don't want the public to think that we're just giving away two or three acres of land for $1.
I understand.
You know, because when you read this, it just sounds like, oh, here we go, another one of those deals, you know?
If it.
So I think that needs to be explained a little bit more to the public.
If it would please the chair, I'm happy to do that.
That's fine, Steve. You can explain.
Okay. And this is not a new issue. Quite frankly, this has been going back and forth, and has come before the council previously. This particular property had a structure that had fallen into disrepair. I think that's at least a fair way to say it. And what's become necessary is they've had to raise this building up in order to put a proper foundation under the existing structure, and then they're putting another structure onto the back. There are setbacks that have to be met for this to work for them with the new footprint, even though the existing structure drops back down. What, and I really can't see any rational basis for it, but when this right-of-way along this side of the building was set up, it was set up in an unusual shape and much larger than is necessary for other roads of this size. So there's a lot of excess property there. We were approached by the person that's buying the home, as well as the contractor, to see if there was something that could be done to make that happen. It was just not going to be a feasible project without the opportunity to make this adjustment to the right-of-way. There is going to be quite clearly a significant increase in what this lot is now going to be worth to the city as a result. And quite frankly, from the way the footprint looks, there's no disadvantage to putting this property over to private owner. It's just one less thing for us to care for that's not going to have a result change that is going to hurt us. You know, there's just no downside, if you will. It's all upside. It has obviously been well supported by facts, so there's a substantial basis for making a decision of this type. And Kitty Beerbaum's here tonight, and she's the proposed owner. She has a contract for the work that's being done, and they're, they're doing the work now to make this a better city for you, quite frankly. It's a nice example of how we can take what was old, make it better, and continue to have a historic imprint on our community. But Kitty can come up and speak to that. I don't want to have to do that on her behalf, and I think it's important that you hear from her if you're going to take a poll on this.
Okay. My name's Kitty Beerbaum. I live at 211 East Poplar Alley, LaGrange, Kentucky, 4031. We have a contract to purchase this house. It seems like, once it was surveyed, that at some time in the past, the house was built in 1850. I have almost all the deeds. And at some time in the years, the city evidently expanded the right-of-way, I guess when they changed the roads. So the existing structure, the 1850 structure, sits about, the right-of-way runs right through the edge of the existing house. When we added the, when we're adding the addition on the back, we jumped, moved it over to the right a little bit to get it off the property line. All the deeds that I have indicate that that property, the house was on the correct property at one time. But sometime over surveys and drawings, it got a little, so we're just asking so we can get clear title, give us that little strip of the house that's already there on property. And like you say, it's just a small strip. The house actually itself is probably about a foot, only property, the whole. And it's on Oak Street, and there's plenty of right-of-way there. It's 17 feet off of it, or 12 feet or something like that. And I think that the quarry had said that there's no problem with that small area along there. And we are putting quite a bit of money into the house. We've, historical commission, and everybody's approved everything we're doing, and we have been able to save the house quite a large expense. I mean, we're putting more into this house than we're letting out of it, but we just want to save it. I have paperwork that we're pretty sure it started out in the 1850s, 1860s, at the building where they kept the stagecoach. Samuel Grimes had a stagecoach that ran from LaGrange to Lowell twice a week. The whole back of the original house had a huge opening in it that indicated, we assumed we were trying to document it in Frankfurt, but we assume since it had this huge opening in the back, and the guy that owned the stagecoach line owned the property at that time that was kept there. So it has a lot of other historical things. It was owned by Peyton Head at one time, Samuel Peyton Head and his family. So we're tracing all that. We're just, have been trying to save the house. So this, I mean, we put a lot into it, and we don't want something we can't give a clear title of, just for a couple of little pieces. Strip of like.
I think, yeah, I think we all understood that, and I just wasn't sure that everyone else did. I just didn't want to wake up in Thursday and in the paper, the city sells another property for $1, because we've talked about this in several ordinance meetings, and we've all, right.
I agree.
So it's just a small.
Someone here that doesn't understand.
Right.
What's going on, but if you go by Main and Oak Street, we'll see.
Thank you, Kitty.
Well, and while we're doing it, I might point out, we are not transferring a buildable lot. We are transferring a three-foot strip along one side of the lot.
So they want a poll, or is we just going to give me permission to sign it, or?
Might be a good idea if someone would make a motion for a poll.
Motion for a poll by the mayor.
I'll second. Jason?
Yes.
Stephanie? Yes. Shannon? Yes. Trey?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Eight to zero.
Eight to zero. So we have a written determination for disposal of real property, and I will get this signed. Thank you all. Appreciate it. Thank you, Kitty. You have your LaGrange Utilities Report? Have any questions? Or anything for? Ted is here tonight.
Ted's looking awfully nice this evening. You really didn't have to dress that much. Sorry.
They may be interested to know.
Right. And that's what I answered, I'm coming up here. I know I've got the notes when I come in, but that's okay, because today I've been in Frankfurt all day in terms of Kentucky's starting over the loan for the Interceptor and the South Palm Station land. Today it was granted by the Kentucky insurance, toward $3.1 million dollars to go forward with the project at a current dollar end of strike. So I've been meeting in Frankfurt all day today, and then we're there, we're meeting, and that would come a year or so. That's where I've been all day today, I've been in Frankfurt. And we're going to get the grant in filed.
Great.
For today, that is all approved, $3.1 million dollars.
Thank you for all your work on that.
Hard enough work just to get permission to get an interstate right for I-71, yeah.
I think a lot of it is easier.
Yeah. Thank you, Ted. Karen sent everyone an email. If y'all got it, or if you didn't get it, but she said if you had any questions, you could send her an email, and she would be checking her emails if you have any questions on the LaGrange-Main Street program. Too much, it really jumps out. I mean, it's just a rundown of the events that's going on, and so if y'all, y'all have any questions, you can send her an email, and she'll get back with you.
We don't let the public come in? No. Why not?
We have a special meeting, so we need to have it come in.
That's right. We couldn't, could we? Special meeting, we can have it come in. Yes. Okay, we've got number nine. We're going into executive session. Want to read that, Steve? Yeah, sure.
The executive session will be in accordance with KRS 61.810F, discussions or hearings which might lead to the appointment, discipline, or dismissal of an individual employee.
I'll make a motion for executive session.
Thank you, Trey. Second motion, second. All in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Shouldn't be going long.
No, I didn't, I didn't think I should bring anything, just to like a minute or two.
Just, uh, the, uh, the, uh...
Starting to go down a little bit? Are you going down a little bit?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So, you know, it's like, I'm just, 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 They. That. They're. That. Don't. Prime. The. Your. Right. Oh. Sorry. That's. From. You know. It's. Sorry that. He's come out. Or. He might. I'm. We need to. We've been trying to. Make. So. Or. Or. Play. There. I mean. I mean. We were gonna take them out. But it'd be such a big job. We're gonna take a few out. And then. And. But we're trying. So. 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 It's. But not. Not. We. Then. I. No. We're. Well. Just back. We. You know. That used. Whatever. We can. And. And. Back. Before. Had regulations. Set. It was not on. It. So they had. Old. Or. Oh, my. God. They. And. And. Chicken. And. Chill out. They. Yeah. So we're. We. We're. Trying. But. Yeah. I don't. And there's. Yeah. And. And. Then. And. These. All. Happened. They're. Down. You know what? I checked. I checked. I checked. Bar bros. Oh. This is. You hear about. Every now. And. So. Local. It's. There's too much. Water. Free. So. It's trying. Coming. Early. I'm. It's. That is. A long time. I don't think. I've. As they are now. It didn't. And. Personally. I put. Four. Five. Down. The. But. And. There's a big story. About. That. So. Is that here? No. No. It's. It's. Well. I don't. But. Oh. Forty six. Yeah. But. Yeah. Was. That. Yeah. No. There's. It's. And. And my. Now. Can't. Under. I. And. That. You know. You just. I'm. I mean. I don't. Y'all. I'm. And. Right. And. I'm. Yeah. But. I mean. Completely. Right. When you. And. We're. We. 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 Three. Four. Hours. I mean. Come. Come. Yeah. We're. She. He said. We. Sit on. And. And. Little. So. They're. Coming. Well. I don't. Thank you. Thanks. Like. Like. Man. Wow. I. I'm. You. It's a good guy. I didn't. I didn't. I just. I had. I had. If. I did. But. Let me. And. He's. Pain. I thought. I was. The. Thing. You went. Stay. I'm. Well. We. We. Haven't. Raced. By. We. I would. But. Now. And. On. It's. It's. It's not. I. It's. Back. Time. So. That. Long. The. Ranchers. Didn't. There. Not. Color. I. It's. I. Think. I read. The. Night Service. Do you have? In. Pain. Now. It's. It's. Yeah. Yeah. I miss. The. You know. Alan. Issue. Most. She. You're. I mean. I know. Who. She is. Her. And. Pain. Much. Are you? Part. It works. Good. So. That. It's. We. So. We've. Got. She's. Yeah. I mean. Like. She's. On. We're. We're. Of course. Yeah. Smart. I mean. Yeah. I know. When. We. It goes. And. We. How. I'm. Saying. That's what. I was. I always. I always. Get. It's. I mean. I'm. Your. Horses. It was. Where. The. Horse. Your. See. And I was just. Like. Over here. Say. It's. No. It's. It is. That. I. Got. And. There. I know.[1514.72]